After seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the public. Roll call.
Peterson.
Here.
Kruipse.
Here.
Way.
Yes.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Wenzel.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Coon.
Here.
First on the agenda is approval of last month's minutes. So move.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes from the January meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is treasurer's report.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor to approve the treasurer's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Citizens Forum, nothing.
The citizens, nothing?
Uh, first up is committee of the whole.
Could I, uh, you know, have a motion and second to accept the committee of the whole committee report of January 22nd as written?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor, members of the Nacusa County Council. A committee of the whole meeting was held on Wednesday, January 22nd, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. in the Nacusa Council chambers. Members present were Al Marco Mayor, Trevor Rush II, City Clerk, Terry Schmansky, Emmett Peterson, Robert Schultz, Larry Kruipse, Garrett Coon, August Wayack, Brad Hamilton, and Bob Wenzel is absent.
Yes.
Also in attendance were Krista Coon, Melissa Riker, Dan Carlson, Herman Steiner, and Bill Caverly, our Public Works Director. Number one, Arc Romine, Commercial Real Estate Advisor with Newmark Grub, was in attendance to discuss the proposal to the city to market the Nacusa Business Park and the business district lots off of Market Street. Number two, Casey Fitzpatrick and Linda Weber were in attendance to discuss proposed expansion at the Rainbow Casino. Uh, we don't have, no, no action on either one here, so.
Next is Ways and Means. Chairman Way.
Move to accept the minutes as read.
Second. Motion is second to approve the minutes as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and the members of the Nacusa County Council. The Wayden Meeting was held Tuesday, February 11th, 2014 at 16:00, 6:15 p.m. in the council chamber, the city hall. Members present were August Wayack, Robert Schultz, Emmett Peterson, Garrett Coon. Also in attendance were Sheila Grosskreis, Howard Freeman, Larry Kruipse, Bill Caverly, DPW, and Brad Hamilton. Number one, you already said all the bills. Number two, recommend donation of $500 to Nacusa Walley Days and Newsland City Garage, April 9th, 2014. Number three, recommend sending treasurer to spring municipal treasurer conference, May 1st and May 2nd as per wage agreement. Four, recommend clerk attend election trading session by Wood County Clerks of Office on March 20th, 2014 as per agreement. Five, recommend clerk attending limited term employee internship program put on by DWD on February 12th, 2014 as per agreement. Six, recommend sending Joyce to Bridle Shower Expo at Wisconsin Rapids Elf Club in March, 2014. Seven, recommend sending up to eight to the Chamber Annual Meeting, March 20th, 2014 with registration.
Mr. Chairman, your secretary's assistant screwed up. It should say recommend clerk and two election workers. The words "two" election workers should be inserted.
Okay.
So I'm, sorry, I'm for, they'll just insert that he wanted to take two election workers along, which is a good idea.
Okay, insert two election workers.
I thought the Chamber Annual Meeting was, like, this Thursday.
It's actually, yeah, February 20th, not March 20th.
That's not.
That's another one I was going to question.
That wouldn't be even February 20th.
March.
No.
February 20th. It's a week from this Thursday.
Okay, it's not this coming Thursday.
No.
Okay.
A week from this Thursday.
That's why I was like, one and eight. I was getting March. I'm glad I saw that, I would've showed up there. Where is everybody?
I was going to question that next.
See?
Okay, recommend adoption, two, three, four, five, six, and seven.
Second. Motion is second on the floor to approve, approve items two, three, four, five, six, and seven in the Ways and Means meeting. Roll call. Peterson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Way.
Yes.
Wenzel.
Yes.
Coon.
Yes.
Kruipse.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Okay, next is Public Works. Chairman Kruipse.
There is one small correction on item eight of the Public Works meeting. Um, hotel stay says March 4th and 5th, it should be March 3rd and 4th. Other than that, Public Works has one meeting to report on, and I move that minutes to accept as read.
Second. Motion is second to approve the minutes as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public Works meeting was held on Wednesday, February 6th, 2014 at 8:30 a.m. in the Nacusa Council chambers. Members present were Larry Kruipse, Robert Schultz, Garrett Coon, August Wayack. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Bill Caverly, Terry Fancher, Bill Caverly Jr., Lee Emmer from MSA, and Brad Hamilton. Item one, discuss water issues drawing service lines. Recommend purchasing new welder for approximately $16,000. Item two, discuss the fuel issues. Item three, discuss DPW truck issues. Item four, discuss WWTF issues. Recommend renewing Bi-Tech contract for sludge hauling. And it'd be a three-year contract again? I believe there was a raise of...
One cent?
One cent? Yeah, one cent for gallon, or per pound, whatever you need to haul it. Very reasonable. Item five, MSA update, discussed phosphorus legislation, the GIS technical services, and wet poll steam, 2014. Recommend mayor to sign task order for MSA to work on this project for a $1,200 fee. Item six, discussed grants. Item seven, recommend sending two DPW employees to wastewater training solution school in Green Bay on February 25th and 26th. Hotel stays the 24th and 25th. Tuition fee per employee is $160. Item eight, recommend sending two DPW employees to phosphorus removal school in Janesville on March 4th and 5th. Hotel stay March 3rd and 4th. Tuition fee per employee is $160. Item nine, recommend sending two employees to rural water tech conference in Green Bay on March 25th and 28th. 25th through the 28th, excuse me. Hotel stay March 25th, 26th, and 27th. Tuition fee per employee is $215. Item 10, recommend DPW director attend DOT conference in Rothschild on February 19th. That's a $20 fee. Any questions? If not, I move to adopt items...
One.
Yeah, one, seven.
Four.
Yeah, one, four, seven, eight, nine, and 10.
Five.
Five.
Sign it.
Yeah.
Second.
Yeah. And you'll...
We'll do this and then we'll go to that. Motion is second to approve items one, four, five, six, or one, four, five, seven, eight, nine, and 10 for the Public Works. Roll call. Way.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yeah.
Coon.
Yes.
Kruipse. Hamilton.
Yes.
Wenzel.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
You had something for the...
Yes, and I'll talk to the camera.
That's okay.
This has been a long cold winter. Our biggest concern right now is water freezing. The water tower has ice in the tank, and we are maintaining just enough temperatures so the tank doesn't freeze. We have now had two water mains that broke, one at the intersection of North Section Street and Market Street, and one on First Street. We have thawed over 30 lateral lines running to houses, and we have the water running in a lot of homes. We are unable to do a citywide water run as other municipalities are doing as our wells are running low. Everyone should run their water periodically so they don't freeze, especially those households that have very little water usage. There is about six feet of frozen ground in the street, and about three feet where there is good snow cover. You should keep a supply of drinking water, and maybe a container for flushing your toilet in case you freeze up. Make sure your basement is warm, and a good airflow around your meter. If you freeze, we will do everything we can to get you, your water going. Please have patience with us, as we had 10 today, and we have seven of them thawed out, which means we're three behind right now. Once we thaw out a line, we keep the house running about this pencil size to keep the water moving. The old thawer we had was a 1956 model, and it gave up about two weeks ago. A big thank you to the village of Port Edwards and their employees, as we have been working together and using their machine. We got a new machine yesterday afternoon, and it has been used steady since this morning. I also want to thank our public work employees. They haven't had much time off this last month and a half. They've been working Saturdays, Sundays, early mornings, evenings, skipping their lunches to keep everyone in water. Just for emergency also, hopefully we're going to get out of this, but just for emergency, our Nacusa Community Center is open Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 3:00, so if you need restroom facilities or water, we can extend those hours if needed. Please get ahold of me at 715-572-3614.
Thanks, Public. Next is public safety. Brad, you want to...
Public Safety had one meeting this month, and I moved to adopt the minutes as presented.
Second. There's a motion is second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The Honorable Member of Mayor's and members of the Nacusa County Council. The Public Safety Committee was held on Tuesday, February 4th, 2014 at 5:30 a.m. in the Nacusa Council chambers. Members present were Brad Hamilton, Chairman, Emmett Peterson, Secretary, August Wayack, and Robert Wenzel. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Fire Chief Mike Archie, Assistant Fire Chief Dave Reichtman, Ambulance Chief Don Harnish, Assistant Ambulance Chief Ken Moody, and Police Chief Sean Woods. Item one, update on safety center remodel. Blueprint is to be presented to the committee this spring with construction soon after. Started out to dismantle the old dispatch center. Item two, received a grant from the Courage Foundation for $2,306 for water rescue equipment. Women's auxiliary gave $500, Gary's towing and Frank Robinson gave $100 each. Pumpkin Fest gave $250. Fire Department's fundraiser account will finish off the purchase of the equipment of up to $10,000 that was raised. Item three, replace the generator and wiring on Engine 1 with $2,400 from the fundraiser. Item four, recommend hiring Eric Davin as a part-time police officer. Item five, recommend purchasing an electrical machine for approximately $1,000. Any questions? Move to adopt items four and five.
Second. Motion is second on the floor to adopt items four and five of the public safety report. Roll call. Wenzel.
Yes.
Kruipse.
Yes.
Way.
Yes.
Coon.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yeah.
Peterson.
Yes.
Next is property recreation and human affairs. Chairman.
Iro Mayor and members of the Nacusa County Council made that motion to accept the minutes as printed.
Second. There's a motion is second to accept the minutes as printed. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Property Recreation Human Affairs meeting was held on February 5th, 2014 at 5:30 in the Nacusa Council chambers. Members present were Robert Wenzel, Chairperson, August Wayack, Secretary, Garrett Coon, Emmett Peterson. Also in attendance were Robert Schultz, Mayor Al Marco, Greg Boardman, Jack Jordette, various school district adults and students, Bill Caverly Sr., and Terry Whitmore. Number one, recommend rolling thunder rotter issues of Riverside Park for cruising dates from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. from May 22nd, 2014 until September 20th, 2014. Dates for that would be May 22nd, June 26th, July 24th, August 28th, September 20th, 2014. Number two, discuss business park formation promotion. Number three, discuss Lynn Creek Estate Lot Sale. Number four, recommend grave flowing fees raised from $100 to $200 in modified ordinance system update. Number five, we'll discuss the community center. No new issues there. Number six, discuss with the Nacusa Youth Recreation Personnel about projects and grants. General consensus for the youth being the, pursuing the construction of a skate park, we recommend that you proceed with a grant application. I'd say worry about that is, we have significant representation from the school district in Nacusa and the high school students working together with us to pursue grants to enhance our youth recreation in the city. I'd like to applaud the fact that we had so many students involved from city government this year, this month. We had a full house.
Recommendation?
Yes.
One, four, and six.
Make recommendation for number one and six.
And four.
Thank you.
Motion is second to approve items one, four, and six of Property Recreation and Human Affairs meeting. Roll call. Schultz.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Wenzel.
Yes.
Coon.
Yes.
Way.
Yes.
Kruipse.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Next is wage and salary. Chairman Hamilton.
Wage and Salary had one meeting this month on January 22nd. I moved to adopt the minutes as presented.
Second. Motion is second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Wage and Salary meeting was held on Wednesday, January 22nd, 2014, 10:00 a.m. in the Nacusa Council chambers. Members present were Brad Hamilton, Chairperson, Mayor Kruipse, Secretary, August Wayack, and Robert Schultz. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Terry Schmansky, Emmett Peterson, Garrett Coon, Police Chief Sean Woods, and DPW Director Bill Caverly. Motion by Kruipse, second by Wayack to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851(c) regarding employee salaries, with all members voting yes. Motion by Wayack, second by Schultz to go into open session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.852, make recommendation on matters discussed in closed session. All members voted yes. Item three, we recommend adjusting police chief's salaries to $67,533.49. Item four, discuss mileage conference reimbursement forms. And five, discuss employee handbook, which is ready, printed, and all it has to be is picked up and started distributing. And I hope we can do that tomorrow. Any questions? I move to adopt item three.
Second. There's a motion is second on the floor to adopt item three of the wage and salary meeting. All in favor? Roll call. Peterson.
Yes.
Coon.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Kruipse.
Yes.
Wenzel.
Yes.
Way.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
It's it for committee reports. Old business, there's a couple of things that we need to discuss. First is the industrial park promotion. I contacted Jim, I think it was Friday, and I met with him this morning. He had some concerns and some questions about some of the language in there as far as the, um, contract that we were looking at getting into with, um, Newmark Grub. So we did a conference call with Arc, and, um, what we've decided to do is Jim and Arc will hopefully make all of the corrections and get an agreement set, and then I will call a special council meeting next Wednesday evening. Arc said he will come down for it, and hopefully we can get this, um, completed so we can get going on the promotion of it. There was a few questions as far as, um, the commission portion of it, and we wanted to get that ironed out, and a couple of things that we discussed here already agreed to, so it's just going to be basically retyping up part of that, uh, contract in the back. And then he's also going to do a separate agreement for the lots over here on Market Street. Basically, they're going to pretty much be the same agreement, but he's going to draw up, draw up a separate one and bring that next Wednesday night, too. That is the tentative plan, is that we will do one next Wednesday. If for some reason, uh, they can't connect and get this ironed out, then there won't be a meeting, but I told him I need to know by Monday morning at the latest so I can get this posted. So, that's where we're at with that right now. Hopefully, like I said, we can get this, they can get everything on your doubt worked out, so it'll be a short meeting on Wednesday. So, tentative plan for next Wednesday at 5:30. So. And then that's it on that, and next under old business is the Lynn Creek Estates Lot Sale. We've talked a little bit about that in Rob's meeting the other night. Jim and I also talked about that. There's a couple of other things that, that we need to discuss. We're, Jim and I talked about it, we're shooting to do this, like, the middle of April, whatever that middle Saturday is, I think it was like the 19th or something like that is, was that date. But there's a couple of other things that we need to set as far as, um, some minimum pricing and things like that, and how we want to market out there that we're going to do this, but we need to get that, um, notice out soon enough. So if people are watching this and know somebody that's interested in a lot, that is the tentative date, or at least somewhere is in mid-April, then we will do the auction. It's going to be basically first come, first served. I gave Jim a copy of the, the lots that are vacant. There's about, I think, 12 of them over there that are open yet. So, um, and then we've also, I also discussed with him that, uh, all of the covenants that are currently on over there, um, that were involved in the original lot sale, the way the committee felt was those covenants would continue. So, that's, so we don't have neighbors buying lots and splitting them and things like that that's defeating the purpose of it. So, um, that's where we're going to be at, and hopefully, um, Jim and I will talk in a next week or so and get a few things narrowed down, because he's not going to be able to make your meeting, so we'll have everything set for that night, so. So, that's just where we're at, um, just an update on that. So, any other questions on either, either of those two?
Some auctioneers tend to specialize more in, uh, real estate than others, I don't think.
I have no idea how those, if there is actual, I mean, like, real, like you said, real estate.
Well, some auctioneers have done a number of real estate auctions.
Oh, okay.
And others, I'm not sure if they've ever done one yet, but they've only, they only done. But you want somebody with, we want somebody with some real experience.
Yeah. But, but I mean, it, the, the other lot sales was like, um, you know, you got to start construction within a year.
And so, and they have to follow all the covenants. Just because you get a lot for us.
Have to have a basement in a year and a completed structure to, so.
Oh, yeah, there's nothing changing.
Hell, you got one lot there that's not very good. Minimum do that.
Well, there's, there's actually 13 vacant lots over there. One of them is the...
Water.
Works as the drainage for that area, and then there's one right next to it, um, to the south, that basically the front third to a half is what's buildable. The back half of it is the continuation of that, that drainage area. So, that would be the front half. I've included that in the sale piece.
What lot?
Yeah, so. The, the one that's not buildable at all, we're, that's just going to have to straight, see, our property and drainage for, for that area, because I think that's where one of the, the storm sewers out there runs into, so.
Could we put, like, if we wanted to, or somebody had the initiative to, and necessarily city paying for it, could you, could you make it into like a small park?
Well, we had talked about that, but I don't know when we developed it, you know, depends on what it gets.
Yeah, that's true.
That pretty much has water in it to your...
Yeah.
Really?
We got a park like that already.
Yeah, we got a lot of it. We don't need another, we don't need another.
Riverside Park, two.
Yeah. It's be Creek Side Park.
Yeah, if anything.
Well, yeah, but I think if we, if, we would probably still want to keep ownership of that in case we have to drain it, or, I mean, there's some drainage issues or something like that, and we don't have to worry about it. But or anything, it's still our property, and we can just, uh, maintain it that way.
We can, if anything, tie it into the nature trail up under, we have a school park project.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Or just let it be.
Yeah. Okay, anything else under old business? Anything else under new business?
Um, I, I don't have a, uh, airport commission this month. It hasn't been printed or checked out yet, but, uh, the one thing I do want to report out on the airport commission is that we received our, we got a grant, 95%, sorry, 90 or 95. Depending on what we buy, we can get 90% federal, 5% state, 5% local, 95 and 5. It depends on what it is. We picked up a, uh, a big in loader with a blower, a sweeper, a pusher, and a scoop, and that's how I describe them, that's Brad's description. And we are, we need to get a, a more yet for it, but one of the things that we did that, the reason we did that is within three to four years it will pay for itself, and then help us immensely with the budgeting. So far, it has helped immensely with the snow that we've gotten. Uh, we, we received it on the 17th of January, I believe, and he's been working, uh, they've been working with it, uh, quite a lot, and it's, it's working out very well. They're getting, you know, it's, it's a working into type of thing, uh, but it's, it's going pretty well. Airport's good, uh, working out really good. We've, we've got some plans for it. One thing we got is we took a bunch of trees down up there due to the FAA and the Bureau of, uh, Aeronautics, State Wisconsin Bureau of Aeronautics, for landing aids, and there is some down stuff up there, but he wants some firewood. It won't be till spring, and I don't know if, if and or when that would be, but if, if we decide to do it one more time to allow people to go in there and take the firewood out, which is mostly pine, you know, there's a little bit of this and that, but it's mostly pine, it's still burning. We'll announce it when we, when we get the chance. Obviously, with now with the snow, it's just impossible for anybody to get to it, but, uh, and then eventually we're going to be putting up, uh, working with the various areas for putting up trees that don't grow too high, or, and/or bushes, sometimes bushes to block like First Street, I believe Sampson or, uh, I can't remember the other ones, but just make it look nicer again. But, uh, we had to take the tall ones down, we had no choice, so that's, that's something that's going to come in the future. So, that's about all I got for that. Again, as soon as I get the, uh, as soon as I get the minutes, I'll fire them off to Joe and he'll give it to everybody.
Is there, is there any way to get, like, a usage, a usage report?
I get one every month, yes.
Is that, is that the usage in that?
That's included, that's included in my minutes. Usually.
Yeah, I, I, I never saw that, I just...
I can get your copy, absolutely no problem.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, um, we're going to department monthly reports. First is police department's monthly report.
Move to approve, chairman.
Second. Motion is second to approve the police department's. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is public works department monthly report.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion is second for the, uh, public works. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the ambulance department's monthly report.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion is second for the ambulance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the fire department's monthly report.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion is second for the fire department. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the building inspector. I think there's two of them actually, the one's an annual report maybe, but...
Move to approve both reports.
Second. Motion is second to approve both, uh, building inspector reports. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There's no community center in the reports.
I was going to not move to approve.
Then we have the bill. Ways and Means, 205. County Council, 385. Ways and Salary, Property Rec, Public Safety, Public Works. All at 205 each. Committee of the whole, 315. Mayor's Salary, 555. And then we've got, uh, two bill lists there. One of them totaling $769,684.53, and the other one of the utility, $42,098.24.
Move to approve the bills as presented.
Second. Motion is second to approve the bills. Roll call. Coon.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Way.
Yes.
Kruipse.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Wenzel.
Yes.
Anything else that we need to discuss?
I have one thing. There, out on the front marquee out here, there is a thing asking people to adopt the fire hydrant. Please do that.